Call a meeting to order. Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a routine and justice for all.
Welcome everybody tonight. We have been seated and we have, right off, we're gonna have a presentation. And I don't know if you want to do the introduction?
No, it's okay.
But remember the gentleman's name.
George knows his name.
Folks, this is Dave Wheel from the Vermont Army National Guard. I guess he's got something for us tonight, so I'm gonna turn this over to Dave.
Thank you, George. Let me, perhaps I can just do a brief introduction. I represent the Employer Support of the Guard and Reserve Program. I'm responsible for the state of Vermont and I served many years in the Vermont Army Guard with your Chief of Police and we go back more years than either one of us cares to think about, but it's all good. And anyways, if you haven't heard about the Employer Support of the Guard and Reserve Program, it's a Department of Defense program and our purpose is to work with members of the Guard and Reserve and their employers to help them understand rights and responsibilities under federal law. They have job protections for guardsmen and reservists. We do a lot of education around federal law. We assist in mediation where there are differences or difficulties or misunderstandings and we help getting, we help veterans to get employment. And that'll be my one pitch to you tonight. If you're thinking about hiring anybody, please think about hiring a veteran. One of the more enjoyable pieces of my job though is what we're doing tonight is making a presentation and thanking employers for the support that they have given to guardsmen. In this case Officer John Petro has nominated Chief Merkel for one of our awards. It's called the Patriot Award and it's presented to supervisors and employers who have given special levels of support to those individuals who are in the Guard and Reserve. As you may imagine, that kind of support is so critical to a guardsman or reservist being able to do their own job. So, I'll stop talking except to say that on behalf of the Secretary of Defense, the Employer Support of the Guard and Reserve recognizes Chief George Merkel, Virgin's Police Department, as a patriotic employer for contributing to national security and protecting liberty and freedom by supporting employee participation in America's National Guard and Reserve force. So George, on behalf of the Secretary of Defense, congratulations. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Okay.
Thank you. I do have a lapel pin for you to wear as well.
I adore that. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Thanks folks.
My pleasure. So thank you all for making time for this and thanks for having me.
Well, I'll tell you this, the city of Virgin's has always been supportive. I said right from the beginning that one of the things that attracted me to Virgin's is the patriotic nature of the folks that live here and work here and this is just something we can hang on our wall together. Thanks folks.
Chief, we want to thank you for bringing the honor of the pride to the city of Virgin's. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you George.
Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Why don't you get to business here? Thanks Dave, nice seeing you again.
A pleasure. Nice to meet you.
Thanks so much.
Sure. Do you want to check this picture to see if, make sure that came out? Because I can take another look if it didn't.
I'm not responsible if that camera broke, picking pictures over the folks.
Yeah, these are funny.
How do you spell your last name, Dave?
Wheel, just like on a card.
Thanks, David.
As long as eight by ten glossy's don't end on the post office wall, we're all good.
Mayor, if no picture show up at the meeting when the Texas two steps with my wife, you're the first guy gonna come visit.
Uh-oh. Alright. I'll make sure I have plenty of beer on hand. Okay, that was good. Our next person that was supposed to be here hasn't made it yet, Catherine Brooks. She's supposed to be talking about some, the War of 1812 and some events that are happening, so hopefully she'll be along shortly. So what we're going to do is go right on to talk about warrants. And I think our new member, Peter Karen, welcome Peter. And do you have any questions on the warrants?
Just a couple of things, I just don't know what they are. Is that, is that a public?
Sure, absolutely.
Yes, this is time to do it. There's something down there for dry cleaning?
Desabreis is a company that we use that takes, that does all of the dry cleaning for the police department.
Oh, okay. Alright.
The Public Works people have to wash their own, right Jim?
And the ballot coding, I presume that's getting the ballot machines ready to read the, yup?
That's, yeah, that's correct.
And the Train Depot project, from having heard you talk about it before.
Yeah, the Train Depot project is totally passed through money. This is a train relocation project. There's a, the city, if you will, received an enhancement grant. Actually, that grant was done with a joint application with Plattsburgh and it is zero percent municipal money. And frankly, I'm not sure whether or not it's eighty percent federal and twenty percent state or ninety percent federal and twenty, ten percent state. All I know is it's zero percent city of Virgin's. However, because the grant came to the city of Virgin's, the architectural contract, and that's what's gonna happen, is the contract with S2, which does the, did the architectural and engineering work, all of those dollars are passed, are passed through. We get a bill, we cut a check, and before the city even writes the check, I've submitted a request for reimbursement to B Trans and many times, I think Joan, right, the, the, the reimbursement comes before the check has been released, so it's worked out fine.
Okay.
But I can tell you, originally the city was going to be running both the engineering and the whole construction project through the city accounting and that's not the case any longer. But we are gonna finish out the design contract with S2 and then the actual project itself will be funneled through Mike's organization.
And I hear that there are starting to be a little bit of movement, but we'll wait and see on that.
Okay. And there's a difference in the total amount on what we got in our packet and this total amount?
Yeah, and that's, there was a few, but we, the way that our system works, I'm sure there's a way to encumber funds, Peter, so that it shows up in our budget. We don't do it that way and for me, I like to pay bills so that they show up in the budget so I know where they're at. So when we put the agenda packets out to the city council on Friday, we've tried to pay every bill that should be paid in your packets. And then of course, there's some bills that come in over the weekend and then on Tuesday afternoon, so at the end of here, it should just strictly track. So that you, if you look towards the bottom of that page, there's probably ten more bills that showed up between Friday and today and, you know, I, it's been our practice to be a good payer. So if the bill is something that, if we purchase something, we wanna pay the vendor. So there's, there, I don't know that it's been done that way in the past, Mike, but I, you know, I just like to pay vendors, so there's always a, you know, a short list there at the end of new, of new bills.
Okay, great. Thank you very much and thank you for giving me a chance to ask a question.
It's extremely important to pay the bills, to keep those good vendors and people coming back to you, to keep you, good quality work and, you know, that's the way to operate. We're gonna skip back off the budget and warnings for a moment and Catherine Brooks is joining us. Catherine, we're gonna turn it right over to you and tell us what you can about the War of 1812 celebration.
Okay. Ah, let's see. I attended a regional meeting about a month or two ago now. Mel was up to his ears and stuff, so he wasn't able to attend and there, actually, Marguerite sent a call from the area was also going to attend. Anyway, it couldn't happen and so I was there and I'm gonna give you all this, copy of this to pass around. Plattsburgh, and you may have, this may have already filtered across the lake, but Plattsburgh, the Visitor Bureau, which is the Adirondack Coast Visitor Bureau, they had a consultant come and meet with them a while back because evidently, while they have day visitors in that region, they don't have overnight guests at all. And, oh by the way, Catherine Brooks, I live on South Maple Street and I work with the State Department of Tourism and Marketing and my area is cultural heritage tourism. So it was with that hat on, plus being a Virgin's resident, that I went to this meeting. So that Adirondack Visitor Bureau hired a consultant to come and meet with them, to talk with them about what they could be doing to increase tourism in their area. And the consultant that they had was really felt like the card that they have to play is the War of 1812, the Battle of Plattsburgh. And so the current head of the Visitor Bureau is really trying to push the region to really focus on that and she sees it as a multi-year project, but that they have plans for quite a big visitor center, they envision a body of water and they've started thinking about big boats, replicas, but I'm sure they'll end up scaling down to model boats to recreate the specifics of the Battle of Plattsburgh. I believe that this fall, their annual celebration is, they're going to try to do a lot more. So it seems that for Virgin's, if you're able to do any partnering with Plattsburgh, it might be a way of getting the word out about what Virgin's has to offer as far as the War of 1812. I can look into it, but more and more, we're finding that visitors to our area are making, to Vermont, make decisions kind of mid-week about coming up and it's really the drive market people who are coming to Vermont for three and four days. Even, I received a telephone call one day from some people in California who were coming for a very, a long weekend and they were making travel plans on a Monday or Tuesday. What all that means is that while it's really great to have print advertising in local newspapers because those newspapers are what gets, they get read really well, that some web advertising is also a possibility and I can look into that for you all if, if at some point to promote the Virgin's events, that might be something that you want to do. So I wanted you to definitely know about what Plattsburgh is doing and as far as Vermont goes, a woman from the mayor's office in Burlington, Kirsten Merriman, I'm pronouncing her name wrong, Shapiro, is organizing a meeting for the Vermont players and Mel, she has you down on the list. She's gonna be inviting people who attended this regional War of 1812 planning meeting that took place in Plattsburgh and that of course includes the Maritime Museum here in Virgin's. So that meeting may take place sometime in early April, but you'll be hearing about that and Marguerite sent a call, will also learn about it. And then as far as promoting the War of 1812 events and history on the lake, we're looking into having a regional website for it and I really don't know if this is gonna be possible as far as, it's federal money that supports the state tourism website and there are requirements about that we only promote in the state. But the Lake Champlain Basin Program, which is promoting stewardship and knowledge and caring about the region, so Vermont, New York and Quebec, they're looking into hosting this regional website, so it would be a way for Virgin's to host any kind of activities. Let's see. And then I did, I sent a quick email about this to the Virgin's partnership and they very quickly asked me if I could come and speak with them and I did that a little while ago and I don't know what it is they're planning, but it does really seem like an opportunity. There are, gosh, over ten states that are doing War of 1812. See, it's the hundred and fiftieth anniversary of this, is that the hundred?
Two hundred.
The hundredth anniversary.
Two hundred.
Two hundred. Ah, you all have your history better than I. I'm glad. So there are a number of national websites and it could be that, there could be web ads on some of those websites, if that was something you wanted to look into. Because if it's a pay per click thing, it, it might not be too expensive at all. So I, you know, I'm just throwing out what I know today. Any questions?
You said the next meeting's gonna be sometime?
Sometime in April. Yeah. And Mike, I can make sure that you're copied on that too.
Please. Yeah. And if there's a member of the council that would like to serve on a committee or council, let me know. I know that Art Cohen is looking for us to try to get some event planned and maybe even tie it in with them. So, use the basin or something to that effect. We talked briefly in Mel's office about a year ago and there's some stuff that we tried to get going that failed, but, so.
Well, when I first heard about it, I thought, well, we have to build a boat down here in the basement there and of course then I learned how big the ships were that McDonough sent over across the lake, so I realized that wasn't such a smart idea. I'm learning as I go.
Any questions to Catherine? If not, if you'll share the information with us that you get to keep us posted and if we need to, we may need to have you come back and visit us again.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep.
Great. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay. We're gonna, gonna go back to finish up the warrants. Any more questions on the warrants? And I'd ask for, let me get my minutes in front of me. Whoops, my package. I'd ask for minutes, the public hearing and the council, city council meeting for February twenty second. Motion approved. Randy makes the motion. Do I have a second? Ziggy makes the second. Omission, corrections or errors? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Go to?
Peter being one of the abstained.
Peter abstained. And then the annual city meeting, thirty twenty-eight, I'd ask for a motion on those?
No, those go, be approved by the voters, so.
Okay.
Anyway, Joan included those in your packet. If you see anything in there, because they won't get officially acted on until next year, just let Joan know if you see something that needs to be modified in there, just let her know and she'll fix that for, for next year.
Nothing keeps me stressed.
Not a problem.
Review the budget.
The, my, the budget that I have in front of me is just a little bit more up to date than yours because I ran mine off just before I came down. Includes the bills that we added to the warrants and also an additional week's payroll. So here we are, almost at the end of March, obviously not another city council meeting, so we are just about at the seventy-five percent mark. So when you're reviewing this budget, that's kind of the number, the percentage you wanna keep in your head when you're looking at it. And I will tell you that, as I was alluding to before about the warrants, the only way that I can tell where things are at is to pay bills. So that it gets into the budget and you can, and you can better examine, you know, where things are at and one of the things that was included in your bills was the last quarterly payment for this fiscal year relative to our workers' compensation, property and casualty and liability, insurance, police professional liability, any of our faithful performance, premiums, errors and omissions, those are all paid. And I will tell you that from a workers' compensation standpoint, that's audited on an annual, on an annual basis, as many of you know, and we had that, they conducted that field audit and we've already got our preliminary numbers and, you know, because not this winter, but the previous winter was so easy and the police overtime was, was in a little better shape, the, the result of our workers' compensation audit is very, very good in that I think my estimated covered payroll was like nine hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars and it ended up being eight hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. So, you know, obviously what had happened is, is those estimates included like Les Champignes' position, the full-time administrative assistant, anticipated, you know, overtime that didn't occur in the public work. So the point is, is that when you look at the workers' compensation line items, you'll see that they're in pretty good shape, but they're actually in even better shape because there's a check that's gonna come hitting us here in another few weeks, hopefully. So from a department standpoint, given that seventy-five percent is the number you're looking at, police is sitting there at eighty-one percent, obviously a bit concerning, but again, many of the insurances have already been paid and so those line items are not gonna climb. Will we be able to get, keep at or under that hundred percent? That's the, that's the challenge. Likewise, at Public Works, I'm not sure what your percentage says, yours may say seventy-six percent, mine says seventy-seven percent, but again, similar comment to that, insurances are all paid. Obviously, any thought of doing spring paving, that's out the door. That all got spent moving, moving snow. So all in all, you know, I feel okay at this point, alright? But again, we got, we got three months, three months to go. I think we've learned our lesson that an old Vermont winter does hit us and so therefore, from a budgeting standpoint, you know, you know, we may have learned something this, this year that we'll, we need to be ready for this in the, in the future to budget accordingly, not, not necessarily to budget on the, you know, the, the record storm, but, you know, certainly we've fallen short. And I haven't had the time, as I mentioned at the last meeting, because we do not have a line item for rented equipment, we've just been dumping those numbers into the winter maintenance and materials and I, and I will, I promise you, I will split those out, create a line item with a zero budget, pull that apart so we can truly measure how much salt and sand expense we really had against that budget so that we can more intelligently hit a number, you know, this coming year. So hopefully I'll, I'll get that done.
The other thing I think we wanna do there, Mel, is also look to see if we have the right tools for the job. I mean, yeah, we don't, we don't need a truck like they have at the airport, but maybe we need to do something with another piece of equipment on, in other areas.
Well, one of the things, you know, you know, Jim and Carol and we've all talked about is, you know, if you have a two or three inch storm, you know, you can go out with a tractor and plow sidewalks, it's no big deal, alright? But when you get hit with, with this kind of a storm, you, you, you just can't touch it. You really can't and so it really makes us think, you know what, we, you know, there's equipment out there today that wasn't out there twenty, thirty years ago that many municipalities are using and, you know, that can do a, a much better job. It's not gonna be cheap, obviously, but we need to, we need to examine what we own and see if we really do have the right equipment, because obviously, you know, we need to have the right tools. And, and obviously, we, we got in such bad shape from sidewalk, there was no, there was no catching up and that's not a good feeling for anybody. You know, you know, people overall were, were pretty patient, you know, with us, but, you know, it really shows how important, you know, people wanna walk their dog and, you know, people wanna walk to the store. I mean, it really is important and so, you know, it, to me, it really shows that we need to take a look at what we own for equipment and, and, you know, budget accordingly, if it means, you know, taking out a short-term loan, I mean, I don't know that we're looking at bonding for equipment, but, you know, we may have to get the right equipment, pay for it over a three to five year period and, and, you know, have it in the case of these kinds of events, because it really, you know, I'm gonna use the word, I'm gonna use the word failed, you know, nobody should have, should take offense to that. I mean, the sidewalk, the sidewalks were not in acceptable condition. It's, it's, it's just that, it's just being just that honest, Mike.
Got a question. Isn't, aren't the homeowners responsible for the sidewalk in front of their house?
Well, what it is Randy, we, we did a little research on that and in our charter, there is a section in our charter that says that the city council has the authority to adopt an ordinance compelling an owner to be responsible for the sidewalk in front of them. We do not have that ordinance. Obviously, Plattsburgh does. Plattsburgh, I learned, has an ordinance that, that not only compels them to do it, but if they don't do it, there's a hundred and forty dollar fine each time that the, the city has to go out and plow, plow the sidewalk in front. So yes, we have that authority, Randy, to impose that upon property owners, but the city, to my knowledge, has never adopted an ordinance compelling that.
So there's not an ordinance in our packet already?
I do not believe so, Mike. It's in our charter that gives us that right. I don't, I don't believe, I could double check again, but I don't believe that that's, I don't believe that that's currently the, the local ordinance.
Any other questions, Mel, on the budget?
I just got a comment. I think it's pretty amazing that you've been able to keep the budget, the city works budget where it is in light of the winter that we've had. Really appreciate it.
Well, we're, you know, we thought we were over Joe, you know, over the, over winter. Of course, then it snows again, you know, so, you know, I think we're okay, but, you know, obviously some, some things are gonna have to be deferred, you know, like I say, I mean, we purposely set some money aside to do some additional paving. We're still behind in paving and we, you know, did a good stretch there last year with, you know, a couple of good sections of McDonough Drive, Comfort Hill, High Street, Comfort, Comfort, couple of sections of McDonough Drive, all of Comfort Hill and High Street and we really wanted to, you know, bite off, bite off a couple of other smaller jobs and, you know, that just isn't gonna happen. It will just wait in, until July and August. So, you know, I really, you know, what's, what's fortunate is last year, you know, as you know, we, we ended the year with what I call an almost embarrassing, you know, surplus, you know, two hundred and, you know, two hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollar surplus and we used more than half of that for, for paving and we hope to be able to, my goal is to not touch that other hundred thousand dollars, you know, so that we can then, you know, again, try to do some catch-up on our, on our road. So, you know, you know, I think that we're, I think that we're okay, we just need to continue to use restraint and, and, you know, keep focused on the budget and not jump into that, not bite into that cushion at all.
Other questions, Mel? If not, let's move on to?
I have a request. I'm gonna pick up a page, so I have to leave shortly.
Yeah, sure.
Is there anything that we need to vote on, that, appointments or, I would like to give my?
Three, four. We have enough.
Okay.
We, we got enough Joe, if you need to leave.
I could be happy to give my committee report before I go. I'm sorry, I apologize.
Why don't you do that then?
Okay. The Recreation Committee that the council appointed had a meeting a week ago Monday in Mel's office, Mel was present. There's certainly a lot of, a couple of people were not able to attend, but there's certainly a lot of energy there for this committee and we discussed sort of our, the council's vision for the committee, the committee's vision for the committee and kinda made the decision that we would begin by assessing the city's facilities, doing a couple of field trips, taking a look at facilities and making some recommendations for Mel, hopefully by budget time in, in June. And so my task now is to, our next meeting will be maybe in conjunction with the partnership because they sort of have a parallel effort. That's kinda where we're at with that.
You wanna give that to Joe and I'll explain to everybody what it is. I created on the computer a thank you card for Karen Jordan and the Commodore Singers and anybody that wants to sign it, I'd like to get council members to sign it. So it's, you don't have to sign it, it's strictly voluntary, voluntary and so, and I'll see that it's personally delivered.
I apologize, you know?
Nope, I only...
Lamb coming backwards. I had to deliver a lamb.
Not a, not a good thing.
No. We all have our jobs.
We totally, we totally understand. Okay. Any other committee reports? Hearing none. We'll go to public comment, Jim or Mike, anything to offer, you'd like to offer now at this point?
Nope. Here in case other things come up.
Oh.
Having to do with unification.
Sure. Not a problem, thank you, sir. Okay, then we're going to, if there's no, Peter, oh, Mel, Joan, if you, you're all part of this team, if you'd like to sign that, feel free to do so. We'll go to, to list it under Old Business Number A, appointment?
Old business, that's funny.
That's, that's supposed to be new business.
Yeah, it is new business, sorry.
That's all right. We'll, we'll take care of the old new business, and do appointments first. Senior Aldman, I think, Randy would like to keep that position?
Sure.
We have to vote individually on these, or?
No, I, I don't think...
I'll read them down, I'll read down through them, and we can make one motion to pass them all. Senior Aldman, Randall Paulette, Delinquent Tax Collector, Mel, Tree Warden, Mel, I gotta talk to you about trees, too, I got some problems.
That's actually a typo there, that's Service Officer, not Off, Service Office, so...
I thought it was Offerer S.
That's been there for a couple of years.
Joan, Designation of the Big Speed Memorial Free Library Trustee, Christine Bradford, Addison County Solid Waste Board of Supervisor, Cheryl Breitman, Addison County Solid Waste Board of Supervisor, Alterment, Mel, ACRPC...
Addison County Regional Planning Commission.
Delegate is David Austin and Alice Heskock, and Greenup Day Co-Chairs is myself and Craig Miner, Actor Board Director, Diane Lampier, Transportation Advisory Committee, Greg Edwards, E-911 Coordinator, Mel, and the Energy Committee, we are not, I'm not ready to get, appoint somebody on that yet, so, that'll wait until I give myself a motion here. So, I'd ask for a motion to approve those positions and names that were called out.
I will make said motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Lowell, and seconded by, did I see another hand?
Peter.
Peter, can I? I started, I, I had to have a question.
You have a question? We, we usually go make a motion...
Yeah, I understand.
And then, then we open up the discussion, so...
I'll second.
Ziggy, second it, now we'll open up the discussion.
Just, in terms of conflicts, my wife is on that list, does that mean that I should not vote for that particular position, or does it make any difference in the context of this particular?
In this particular context, it does not matter.
I think it's good that you disclose that, but, you know, as you know, your wife receives no renumeration for that position, so I don't, I don't see any, any financial conflict going on here.
Thank you.
So, in this, if it, if it has something to do with actually us voting on something to do with the district, then it might be different.
The, the one thing, Mike, in the parentheses, I can't remember what I wrote in my memo, but, you know, in the parentheses, primarily, these are folks that currently hold these positions, the only, the only change that's in this list is relative to the E-911 Coordinator.
Yep.
Ralph Jackman was our E-911 Coordinator for, for as long as E-91, from the day E-911 started, until Ralph left us. Jim Brewer took that position on an interim basis, I'm not so sure that he even knew that he did, but he did, and I'll talk a little bit about E-91 work a little later on, under my manager's report, but Joan and I talked about this and the work that's involved, and we really feel that, that it really can be more efficiently handled by city hall staff, we have the maps and this type of thing, and I made the mistake of, I wanted, originally thought about doing a coin flip with Joan, as to whether or not she would be the coordinator, or I would be the coordinator, and then I made a mistake and decided to poll the town clerks in Vermont to find out who typically does this job in towns, and that was a real mistake, to, to be polling town clerks about whether or not town clerk should take on more responsibility, so I lost that town...
You didn't find out that they, she actually paid them money, so that they voted that way?
Well, I think we did find one clerk in Vermont that is an E-911 Coordinator, so anyway, there are a lot of managers, a lot of zoning administrators actually were, were E-911 coordinators, so that's why I've agreed to take on that post, and, and I can tell you, even though it says Mel, there's, there's a lot of jo, a lot of work that lands on Jones, on Jones' desk, so...
Any other questions, discussion on the matter, the appointments? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? So carried. What we're gonna do is, we're gonna go back into the public comment, we revert back, because Tony has asked to come to address the council tonight, because of some news that has hit the street, he just wants to set the record straight, so, Tony, I'll turn the floor over to you.
Well, I, I just, I think the simplest way to, to share with this is, most of you, I understand, have received a copy of the press release from the National Job Corps Association, we talked about the HR-1 legislation that was put on the table, and that's a major legislation in Congress to deal with the reduction of the deficit, and in that particular bill, the proposal that was put on the table was to eliminate over nine hundred million dollars out of the one point six billion dollars that's on the Job Corps budget right now, and if that particular legislation passed, it would, in essence, eliminate about two-thirds of the Job Corps programs, or approximately eighty, eighty-five Job Corps operations across the country. And I do know that when Mel read that, he wanted to ask questions, and, and I would be doing the same thing, that proposal was not passed, and there, I think what, what they're trying to do is just to get a message across, that from a federal budget perspective, there needs to be a significant effort to reduce spending, and everything's on the table. The Job Corps program, in essence, is supported by, by a very strong bipartisan effort across the country, and I don't believe that that will happen. Now, could it happen? Yes, it could. The reality, and I had some conversation with Mel, in my opinion, and my opinion is, is just my opinion, it's not fact, it's just what I believe will happen, is, I believe that there will be a reduction in the Job Corps program, and the more realistic proposal that will come onto the table will take a look at states where there are multiple operations of Job Corps, one that comes to mind is Kentucky, which has seven Job Corps operations, that's a significant amount, the logistics in operating that, they do not have enough youth to fill that with this, with the youth in Kentucky, they typically bring them at expense to fly them from all over the country to fill those centers, so, it makes more practical sense from a operational perspective to reduce the multiple centers. I do know, and I'm very confident about this, that our, my conversations with our congressional representatives, in terms of Peter Welch and Senator Leahy and Sanders, they are very strong proponents of this operation that we have in, in Vermont, and we know the consequences if the program shut down July first, which is a feasible issue, it's not realistic, it's not practical, that it would have a significant impact on this community at large, and that's not something we, any of us in this room wants to happen, so, this is just a sharing of information, I believe that, as most of us know, the, the budgets across the country, whether they're at a local level or at a federal level, they're pretty dire situations, and we need to make some hard decisions.
Do, any of the council members have any questions, Tony?
Yeah, I, I will refresh and just, well, give you an approximation of the impact we have, we, we have a hundred and twenty-one employees working with us right now, and we're running around an eight million dollar a year operation, so it's a significant amount of dollars that are, are recycled throughout the community here, and it's certainly something that we wanna continue and, and push to support what's going on, not only just in, in Virgin, but in Addison County and the surrounding areas. We have had conversations about the status of the lease, the, the lease is scheduled to run through June thirtieth, two thousand and thirteen, we are pushing to see if the federal government will connect with the newly appointed people at the Vermont level to deal with a superseded lease, and possibly look forward to getting support to put improvements on our campus, which I've been told by certain of the key officials within the Department of Labor, that if we got a superseded lease, that they would look to building new dormitories and enhancing the, the campus, which would also bring new jobs in, and do a wealth of good to the community.
Yeah, one of the, you know, one of the realities of the lease that the state has with the United States Department of Labor, which was rewritten and signed in July of nineteen ninety-two, for the ensuing nineteen years, or twenty years, and when you, when you look at this, what, what might sound like a long-term lease, that's not how it's written, it's actually, it, it, it is a provision where there are nineteen one-year options, and so therefore, that's been problematic for the United States Department of Labor and, and any contractors from, you know, even though a contractor ends up with a contract, you know, for three years and has some renewals, there really isn't any long-term commitment, so therefore, to put major capital into some of those buildings become problematic, I mean, 'cause obviously you, you know, yes, nineteen years is a long time, but one year is no time, so it's never, they've never been able to justify putting major capital or, or new, new buildings over there at that facility because of that lease, so, that lease has, you know, in my opinion, kinda worked against everybody, you know, to me, if, if it was gonna be leased to the federal government, and the federal government was gonna put lots of money into that facility, I mean, you'd have to give them at least ten years to have it even be considered, so, you know, you know, Tony has the date, you know, drilled into his head, me too, you know, it is something that we do need to communicate with the state of Vermont as to trying to find out what, what is the long-term intention here of the state of Vermont in that facility, it's, you know, here it is, two thousand and eleven, that's, it's not too far away, that that lease is gonna expire, and, and we really don't have any knowledge at this point of what the plan is, and, you know, that's, that's concerning, really, it's concerning for, for everybody involved, so, obviously, I, I have spoke to, you know, Representatives Clark and, and Diane Lampier about that concern, you know, that, you know, not knowing what the future is on that, you know, on that facility, and, and as Tony talks about, you know, you got a hundred and twenty employees over there that are obviously tied into a, a working operation, you know, that's, that's a, it's a lot of jobs for this, for this area, so, you know, it's a concern.
One, one update, Mel, and, and in terms of letting you know what's going on, that last July, we had a series of engineers, architectures, both structural engineers, mechanical engineers, take a look at our campus, and they do a process which called a facility survey, and they assess the entire sixty-plus acres, the thirty-five-plus buildings that are there, and they do an assessment of where they are with regard to structure, to the mechanical components, air conditioning, climate control, and we expect to get, I had a meeting in Boston in the early part of February, and we revised that plan, and I'm expecting to take delivery of the final facility survey, and what I will tell you is, the long-term plan, as and when the lease situation is resolved, is, would shrink the campus down to about a twenty-five, thirty-acre component there, there would be new additions, some of the considerations for new additions would be two large dorms, so we would go from having nine dormitories to two dormitories, much easier to manage, much more cost-effective with regard to the mechanics and the operations there, and next week, we do have some, some of the folks from the company that we are dealing with, and that's a, a national organization called Phoebe McKissick McKissick, uh, Phoebe Duberri and McKissick McKissick, which is two components of these architectural engineering types that come up, and they're gonna be doing an energy audit, to take a look at what we could do to reduce the waste of energy on the campus. So, they're not sitting still, we're, we're looking forward, we're still looking with a very much a long-term effect on what we can do to the community, both in terms of delivery of service, and also in, in terms of efficiency in operations.
In case you're wondering who I am, my name is Ian McGady, I'm the Business and Community Manager on the Northlands, I've been there just over a month, and in that short time, I've seen the positive impact that we have on students' lives, but also the positive economic impact that the Northlands has on the community here. I've met some of you, and look forward to, to working with the council in the months ahead to keep the positive relationship that, that we have. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, I was gonna ask Tony to introduce you.
I'm sure he would've, I would've got to it.
Any question?
If you, as you're saying, in the future, thinking of adding on these two big, huge dorms, who would be doing it, and would that be remaining there if eventually Job Corps leaves, and what, would you be tearing down any of the other buildings that would be there?
There is no, no plans that I see for tearing any buildings down, you know, you've got some buildings there that are on the historical landmark area, so, there, there is no discussion of tearing down buildings, the discussions that we've had, and, and as soon as I get the final plan, I'll be glad to share them with the council, including a site plan, and looking at where we would condense to, it, just looking at making the operations much more effective. My staffing arrangement right now for nine dorms, and in some of those dorms, there are four floors, you have a basement and three floors above it, and to, to staff and manage that is, is quite cumbersome, having two large dorms that are designed to get better use out of the staffing there, will actually, probably would be able to reduce the number of staff that we have operating those, and put them to better use, maybe in placement and connecting with job opportunities.
Any other questions, Tony, or you? If not, we want to thank you very much for coming and sharing this information with us.
My pleasure.
Keep, keep us surprised of what's going on, if you would please, and we're scheduled for next Thursday, at three-thirty, I believe it is?
Yes, sir.
Okay?
We're good.
Thirty-first.
Great, thanks.
Okay, great, thank you very much. Just so that council notes was going on, Randy, T, T, Oxlade, Mel, Chief of Police, who am I missing from our, I think, is that?
There's gotta be another.
Which I think the way we're sitting, George was next to me, I was here, you were there, I think, those of the council members, or people connected with the council or the city, are meeting with them and, and talking about the way they're handling police information and, and, and stuff, and we're trying to start off with the community relationships and, and reestablish that, so we can get that ball rolling again.
Yeah, some, some...
It kinda died.
Yeah, the, the, as Mike mentioned, the, the community, I don't know what our official title is, you know, Community, Community Relations, you know, Job Corps Executive Committee, whatever, but, as Mike said, it was a, you know, back when Job Corps originally landed in Virgin's back in the late seventies, there was a local committee formed, you know, consisting of the mayor, fire chief, police, chief of police, and people at, at large, and somewhere along the way, that just stopped happening, and there really is some, there's some importance there, that, you know, that we meet with senior staff on occasion, and one of the, the focuses at this point is to have a, a very clear protocol as it relates to their security folks in our police department, you know, the ex, just to make sure that the expectations, you know, the promptness of reporting...
sure that the expectations, you know, the promptness of reporting any criminal activity, how, you know, if there's any, you know, illegal drugs, narcotics there, how those are handled. It's, you know, George and I met with the state's attorney, we're just trying to get things a little bit more organized and have a protocol so that when something happens at Northlands, the folks that work in security know what the expectations are and we know what the expectations are, you know. So that's, that's been our primary agenda item. The other thing is, is there's, there had been, to some degree, a lack of communications when they have some major events over there. You know, we need to know about those to make sure that, you know, traffic is, is handled appropriately when, when that occurs. So it's just to improve, it really is just to improve communications with their, with their security and senior staff.
That would be good too, because of the way he's discussing, apparently there may be some vacant buildings coming up over there, that hopefully maybe we could get involved again with, you know, to utilize.
Well, there's the Fairbanks and there's the Arsenal.
There's two of them there now.
That, that are there now. And before our past commissioner for buildings left, he was thinking about having some conversations with the council to see if they were interested in those buildings. With the new commissioner, I'm not sure where that conversation's going to go. He's getting his feet wet, so we'll just let him get settled in a little bit before we get too far.
Is that, is that committee, I guess I missed your first statement about it, it's a committee of the council or?
It's some members of the council, some of them are council, like Kitty Oxlade-Moggie's not on the council, she's a member-at-large, a citizen that was a previous mayor, had exposure to how the past system ran, and I asked her if she would serve with the ones that are attending now. Originally, there was more citizens involved and we just want to either, we're not really calling ourselves an executive committee or what, we're just trying to reestablish and figure out what our mission is and where we want to go or where we need to go and then start pulling the people in and getting the right people involved. You know, we, we don't want to take fifty people over there and then just not really accomplish something.
I'll talk to you afterwards, because the first thing rescue is, always has questions over there sometimes, so.
Sure. Yeah. And that may be a, a, a good position for yourself and, or, and, and, you know, as far as president or a member of the squad, or at least some of the means. Item number six B, create, the Conservation Commission, we're deferring that to the fall.
Well, if they, what it, what we need is a motion, Mike.
We need a motion?
Yeah, the, the, the city council passed a motion to table this to their March meeting. And so I don't want to get all bogged up with, in Robert's Rules of Order, but what the planning commission would like is for the city council to leave this on the table until, I'm going to say approximately fall, upon receipt of a formal recommendation from the, from the planning commission.
I make such a motion.
Okay. A little second sit, open for discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Foes, so carried. Boys and girls club?
Uh, I, I don't think I've used up all of my two months, Michael. And I, I will do this limited facilities analysis that'll be ready for you at the, at the next meeting, which basically assesses as a preliminary, or not, a limited, I'm going to call, assessment of, of city facilities. And I'll get that to you at the next, at the next meeting.
Okay. Sounds good. And then we go right back to you, Mel, on item number seven, City Managers' Report.
Yeah, I have a number of things to report on, and the one that's on the top of the list of which some of you know about, and that is that Carol O'Connor has decided after thirty-three years to retire. And his last date of official employment is April thirtieth. I will tell you, he's, he's got a lot of vacation on the books, so I don't know really how much we're going to see him between now and, now and April thirty, because he's got to chew up that, chew up that vacation. So, so anyway, we will soon have a vacancy in that position. And the, the position, unlike the chief of police, the chief of police is an appointed position and that's, and, and the chief of, chief of the fire department is appointed position. And so that's, those positions came back to this board. This position isn't a, a statutory appointed position, it's a, a higher position and I'm going to be having some process to, to fill that vacancy and I'll, I'll keep the city council informed, but at this point, we're just going to let Carol retire. Obviously, you know, he's more than paid his dues here with giving the city thirty-three years, I, you know, I, it's hard to believe, you know, I, I remember the day that he got hired.
Me too.
Stayed here for thirty-three years, so, anyway, we will have, you know, some kind of a, you know, Carol, he actually begged me to not tell anybody until April twenty-ninth and I didn't agree to that, so, so wanted everybody to know that. And what one of, what was, what is, what I'll say is planned or will be planned is similar to what we did with, you know, with Les. I mean, Les worked here for twenty years. And so all of the, all the employees got together, you know, at some point and, you know, had, we had Les Champaign Day and so the group will get together and we'll have a, we'll have a Carol O'Connor Day, you know, down here in the, down here in the fire station as soon as good weather gets here. And they tell, they tell me it's coming. So that's the most important thing I got to report on. And the other items I want to report on, I have, there's no rhyme or reason to the order of these. One of the things that I wanted to let you all know is that I have had some requests relative to our revolving loan fund. And when I got to digging through the paperwork, I ran through the fact that the loan committee is something, is a group that has to be appointed on a two-year basis. And one was appointed back in two thousand and seven or two thousand and eight. And so that's something that this council needs to resurrect. I think Zig, you might have been a member or so. Anyway, Mike, I want to work with you and let you know who has appointed them. There's a policy that the city council adopted back in two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight that, that made up the, you know, that set forth the makeup of that committee and say, we just need to get that, you know, get that duly appointed and try to remember.
How's our timing? Is there a deadline that we have to?
No, we can, I think, it's fine, you know, we'll get this together for, for the next meeting. Next item, shifting over to bio solids, I, I have had multiple exchanges with.
Alan Palmer?
Obahowski. We have not been able to set up a, a meeting yet, you know, I, it's probably very difficult for me to get into his schedule when the legislature is in session, but I, I do want to meet with him and, at a minimum to, you know, talk about, you know, hopefully acquiring that land and, and we might even talk about the Northland facility while, while I'm there. I talked a little bit about E nine-one-one and the, the work that is involved. Joan and I, I had, I had a staff person for the state, his name is Angus Something, I can always remember his first name. He met with us to really give Joan and I, Joan and I have been totally out of the loop for all of these years about what the E nine-one-one coordinator does and, and there is, you know, the primary role, if you will, of that is to make sure that when, when if you're at home and you call E nine-one-one, that your telephone is connected to E nine-one-one so that fire and rescue know how to find you. We've, we've, it's been discovered that there's some holes in that, in that database and so Joan and I are going to be jointly working on that over the next few weeks to, to get all of those holes corrected. So anyway, I just wanted to just report on that. Relative to the Lister's Punch List, it's something that I do every year to figure out what needs to be done to establish the, the new grand list, you know, covers anything from, you know, name changes to garages and any construction. I can tell you that this year's punch list, obviously because of the economy, if it, if it wasn't for small city market, there would be virtually nothing on that list. There really has not been a heck of a lot of construction that has occurred over the last, over the last year, but that's, but that list is done. Another item of interest is, I met with a gentleman the other day from a company that purchases antenna cell rights. And, you know, I, you know, obviously our leases are all a public record and anybody can come and look at them and, you know, see what we get for money and what our escalation charges are and, you know, the gentleman, the company they works for is Unison and apparently they do purchase leases. You know, I, I think of, you know, sometimes there may be farmers out there that have a cell tower on their, on their, on their silo and it may be some long-term lease with X amount of dollars per month with no, that a farmer might want to sell that lease to someone so that they would have a, a chunk of capital, all right? You know, our leases are darn good leases, they have very attractive escalations, I knew, I knew that, and he, he caught it himself, that a couple of our leases have, one of them has a six percent escalator and another one has a five percent escalator, so they're, they're very, they are very attractive leases. But I just wanted to share, share that with you, that, you know, it is a, it is a, an asset out there that, you know, we do receive a hundred thousand dollars a year from it and, you know, it's something on our balance sheet that there is a different way that you could possibly use that dollar. I just wanted to share that with you. The equalized grand list that I appealed for two thousand and ten did get settled, Mike signed that a week or so ago. The two thousand and nine equalized grand list is still pending, hearing still scheduled for April twenty-fourth. The two thousand and ten, then our new number set our common level appraisal at one hundred and one point oh one percent, all right? The, the, I'm going to say, the bad news is what that means is that based on sales that have occurred over the last three years, on average, everybody's assessment is a little bit too high, all right? Now, the good news is, is the way the system works is when the legislature sets the rates for non-residential property or when the, when the homestead rates are set, they take this common level of appraisal into effect. So, yes, everybody's, based on this study, everybody's assessment, which is based on that April one, two thousand and seven reappraisal, statistically are a little high. And the rates, the education rates will end up being adjusted a little bit to take that into, to take that into account. So I don't want to say, you know, taxes are going down, but it actually, our rate last year was ninety-nine point two, this year is one oh one. When you do the math, if the per pupil cost stayed the same, everybody in Virgens would, would see a one point eight percent decrease in their, in their, in their rate. The Riverwalk project, I mentioned to you that I was seeking a waiver to go through the procurement process relative to our engineer and structural designers and I got that letter today. And the, the state has agreed to allow us to amend our contract with Trudell Consulting Engineers, so they, they were the designers of this project from eight years ago. And Engineering Ventures was the structural company that, that designed this project and the state has agreed to allow us to use those two firms, which means we can get this project out to bid and finally get the, get the stairway constructed down there. So it was a good letter that came in the mail today. Relative to recycling, if you recall back when we were working on budgeting, trying to figure out, you know, what should we budget, what should we charge the other towns, because there was a time where the recycling fund was in the hole and we had to kind of dig our way out of that hole. And part of the problem is, is that we, we negotiate our contract with Casella over a, over a fiscal year and the contracts that we have with the surrounding towns are also on a fiscal year. The problem is, is the Chittenden County Solid Waste District sets their rates on a, on a calendar year. So you don't know what they're going to do and that's what, that's how we got into this trouble in the first point, is that at one point, there was a negative tipping fee at the MRF whereby if you bought recyclable, brought recycled materials to the Chittenden County MRF, they paid you two dollars a ton. And that suddenly increased to twenty-seven dollars a ton that you paid. So instead of receiving two dollars, you paid twenty-seven. That twenty-seven dropped down to twelve and that twelve just recently dropped down to five. And so effective January one, we're seeing a three hundred dollar a month reduction in our bill to Casella. So we, we actually put in a little bit of a cushion, I think, when we, we didn't want to adjust the rates too much because you didn't know what was going to happen in January. So, you know, we're in good shape now, now with that, with that three hundred dollar reduction. So I think this coming year, we can, we should be able to pass that cost, that reduction of cost, obviously not only to ourselves, but to Panton, Waltam, Addison and Ferrisburg, Ferrisburg as well. The last item I want to talk about is, is about sewer, sewer rates, sewer billing, grace periods. And we could use just a little bit of input from you about, about, about sewer billing. Joan and I have had a lot of conversations, if we were to change our billing to a quarterly collection, it does require some software changes. And, you know, Joan and I, we may, we may, we may not totally agree on, on, you know, where we all land, you know, it's one of these things where one option is to do nothing. And that is, you know, we've always billed sewer on a six-month basis, you send the bill out in April, due in May, you send it out in October, it's due in November. We've been doing that since nineteen sixty-two. So one option is to do nothing. You know, another option is to, is to obviously break that bill up into, into, into quarterly billing. And to do that, you know, to do it the most efficient way, we feel it needs to coincide with our, with our tax billing if we were going to do it. And, and I know that there's been some discussion at the table that, that, you know, if we're going to have it be on a quarterly billing, it should be at a different time of when the taxes are due. And I can tell you, on our end, we think that it's the most efficient from both getting bills out in the mail and collecting them to keep them coinciding, all right? If you, if you go in the other direction, it actually causes more expense. And we certainly understand that, you know, people, certainly in the past, we used to get complaints, you know, gosh, I got to pay my taxes and my sewer the same month and, you know, there, it causes a cash flow problem. Well, one of the things is, is if we go to a quarterly billing, then obviously the bill is cut in half and so it isn't quite as, as large it is before. The other thing is, is because we have this grace period, when we send out a bill, you really have forty-five days to pay the bill. So if people, you know, feel that they have too much of a bill to pay on November fifteenth, I mean, they can pay it anytime within that forty, within that forty-five days, you know, so it's not like we're, we're pinching, pinching them at that. So, you know, Joan and I are a little torn about what to do and one of the things is that if we're going to make a change, we want to make sure that it, that it's, that it actually does, works and it actually is something that improves efficiency and does not cause more, more headaches than what we were, the opposite of what we're setting out to do.
What about the commercial property? If it's more, you know, saving more money, why can't you do it the same way with the commercials that charge them every month to pay their sewer?
Well, there, there's, there's an expensive way to send out billing, that's what we're trying not to do, Zig, is to send out.
Right, so why can't you do it the same way quarterly? I mean, put it all in business and, the commercial and residential together?
Well, the commercials actually are done differently because they're on a measured users. We, the base, basically what sewer works is we have three different types of billing. We have the flat rate billing, we have the measured billing, and there's only like thirty or so of those, right Joan, thirty or forty? There's seven hundred and ninety- There's seven hundred and ninety, flat rate billing. There's thirty or forty that are measured bill, measured billing that are done on a monthly basis. And then you have the two trailer parks, uh, that are, that are billed monthly. So, they really are, they're very di- they're very different. They're very different. And the, the, those monthly billings, yeah, there's a few that are, that are, the meters are read quarterly, but primarily they're, they're, the meters are read by the water district on a monthly basis. They give Joan the information. We input it, send in the bill.
When will we have to have a decision so we can act this and start this? You know, if we were to go quarterly, we'd wanna start it?
I, I, I think what I, what I would like to hear from the council is, you know, we've been billing sewer twice a year since nineteen sixty-two and we can continue to do that. It's, it's not an issue. Does the city council feel that, uh, that the, the property owners would, would benefit, would appreciate, uh, paying their sewer, you know, on a quarterly basis? I think that's, you know, that's the, the number one question. And then if that is something that you'd like to do, Joan and I think that we have, uh, the best, you know, we have a way to make that, uh, be done the most efficient way.
I'm gonna throw a question out to Mike Furley. Mike? I take it you've been listening to that part? What, what's your thought as a, as a taxpayer?
First question is, is, has, have there been complaints Mel about the six-month billing?
I, I think there has been some complaints when, 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 because we collect taxes, August, November, February, May, alright? We do get some complaints when people have to pay their November taxes and their November sewer, uh, at the same time. We do, it's, you know, it's a hundred and seventy-five dollar bill. It's, it's, it's a bill.
And then we have others that when they come in in February, they say, "We don't have sewer this time," right? So, are they looking at, looking at that as relief? They don't have it this time? Or is it confusing to them because they don't pay some of them and?
I've had that confusion sometimes.
Yeah.
I guess it was up to me. It just seems to me we save the city money if Mel and Joan, the people in the office could just bill it quarterly. It's all done at the same time. You're only opening the book or the computer software, you know, four times a year and, uh, just getting it done.
Jimmy, comments?
Personally, we budget our money, so it's not a problem, but I could see it would be a lot easier for everyone if it came all at the same time quarterly.
So, like, especially for the people with the fixed incomes?
Absolutely.
Council members, comments?
Would it be easier for the office?
Yeah, it, but it, it's gonna cost to do the changeover, but there'll be more benefits cause then when we do changeover, our billing, the way it bills now is May through October. We'll do a little billing right now to close us on June thirty. And then our, our budgeting will be on the same fiscal year rather than, at the end of the year, on June thirty. We have a lot of journal entries going on for what we've billed, for what's been used and what's being billed for the following month. And that would all change if we aren't gonna switch to that. And it will cost us, you know, approximately a thousand dollars in software to switch over to this new way.
And the postage, the postage savings will, uh, right.
You'd save hourly time eventually as you, if, if you don't mind feedback from New York, I would say if you've got the forty-five days to pay,
then you could probably make two different payments and space them.
Yeah, people could pay.
Space it, pay, you know, pay the, pay the little bit, one first and the big one later or vice versa, you know? Would seem pretty painful, painless. It's not like you have to come up and, what would it be? Half of, half of one seventy-five?
Yeah, eighty-seven fifty, I think.
Eighty-five fifty along with your tax bill.
I mean, one of the things, you know, if we were to, you know, relative to the timing, uh, as you were asking, Mike, you know, if, if the council, you know, wants to go to this quarterly billing, you know, we re- we, the software upgrade that Joan's talking about really is not needed, is not needed now. It's needed for, it's needed in July. Because we need, we need to phase into the system. Because in the, in the past, when you paid your bill, lots of people don't, they may not realize this, but when you paid your November sewer bill, you were paying for the period from November one to April thirtieth. So, you were paying for, you know, four months in advance. So, to phase into this, just like property taxes, when you pay your August fifteenth property taxes, you're, you're really paying for a month and a half behind and a month and a half ahead. That's how it's done. With sewer, what, to phase this in, the next billing, we would do a two-month billing, alright? So, whatever a hundred and seventy-five, whatever one-third of a hundred and seventy-five dollars is, that's what your bill would be. So, there would be, I'm gonna say, from a cash flow standpoint, there would be an, an immediate benefit to the property owner because instead of getting a bill for one seventy-five that would be due on May fifteenth, that, that bill would be one-third of that. So, there's an immediate cash flow, uh, to that.
Yeah, fifty.
And then the other thing that, you know, Joan and I talked about, which I think is, is, is also good and that's to get our, to get our billing, uh, and rates in sync with the budget process, alright? When we work on the budget for his property taxes, it's all about the property tax rate, the budget, the rate, the budget, the rate, and away we go, alright? And relative to sewer, you know, we don't really give it that much focus. And, and when we're working on the sewer budget, we should look and see, you know, what the rates should be, alright? And, and I know the council has talked about, you know, whether or not we could possibly adjust the rates downward. And that's when you do it. You do it when you're, when you're writing the, writing the budget. And I will tell you that it, you know, I think at some point, we should be able to reduce sewer, sewer budgets because every year we get more and more out of debt, alright? And if we're getting more out of debt, then you'd think that the rate, you know, oughta be able to come down some. But I wanna, the first, the, if we're gonna do this, this first, we would just, you know, I'm gonna say, basically, divide whatever one seventy-five by three is and we'd have to have the city council take, take action on that. But like I say, that would be an immediate cash flow benefit to property owners.
Okay, let Joe, uh, sit down and then, Randy, did you have something?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay, uh, just didn't know if we'd bring up, Joe, up to speed where we're at. Joe, we're talking about sewer rates, whether we go quarterly or keep it semi-annually. That's where, where we're at now, so Randy wants to make a motion?
I make a motion that we authorize Joan and Mel to change her billing cycle from six-month to quarter.
I will second that.
A motion is second. We'll wait for discussion.
Tell me again where this came from. With the idea? Yeah. The, uh, I brought it up, uh, Peter, originally because in, when the water rates went up to, uh, when the water rates went, when the water rates doubled, alright? And, uh, I just felt maybe it was time for us to take a look at our, our rate structure. Because with the water rates, uh, going to ninety-two dollars per quarter, if we do not change to a quarterly billing, now folks are being faced with a, with their quarterly property tax collection, a ninety-two dollar water bill, which used to be forty-three, and a hundred and seventy-five dollar sewer bill. And I was trying to think of a, of a way to try to soften those, those two months out of the year.
Okay. Any other questions? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried? Very good. Ethan Allen, Mel, your report?
I'm gonna defer on this grace period thing, Joan. You know, we, we do have a, we do have a problem with some grace period dealing with our monthly sewer billing, but I'm gonna defer that until, until we, I, I don't wanna have the council talk about that until we talk to Chip on Thursday cause maybe there, maybe there's a softer way, software method that can solve the problems that you have in the grace period on the, on the monthly billing, so.
Good, that did?
Yep.
I do wanna bring up the subject, maybe putting salt in the wound or something, but, uh, I know that after the last storm, uh, I heard some comments come from our city crew and I wa- I wasn't very happy with some of our citizens. Unfortunately, I couldn't get names because they, they weren't big enough to give the, uh, people, the count, uh, the public work crew their names. They were very abusive and their actions were unacceptable. It was a very tough time and in tough time, people pull together. They don't take and beat on somebody to make their job worse or harder than what it was. You know, these guys were working long, extended hours and anybody that wants to complain, my answer was, here's your shovel, join in. So, uh, having said that, uh, I would apologize to the city crew for the actions of some of our citizens and thank those citizens that showed patience and, uh, you know, went out and, even though these guys had, they had to push their snow somewhere and it just happened to fall into some of their driveways. Couldn't help it, you know? Everybody was in that, that same boat, so having said that, let's, we'll move on to next. Item number eight.
Yeah, one of the things, Mike, so that we don't lose track, we, there is a C, there is a, there is going to be an AC and it deals with the, uh, petition that was filed for the revote on unification, so I don't, uh,
You didn't tell me about that, though.
I forgot. Anyway.
Okay, we'll, we'll, uh, we'll, uh, we'll continue with, uh, new business, eight, eight A, eight B, and then we'll talk about AC, okay?
Uh, eight A, I, I hope, I think Michael, uh, if you could use one of those for a signing would be good. What that deals with, as I mentioned in my memo, is that, uh, because of the community development program money that's headed for the senior housing project and the John Graham Shelter, it's really federal money being filtered or funneled through state coffers. And, and the federal regulations, uh, they are plenty. And, uh, so I think that's where, at the last meeting, I've brought you an anti-displacement or anti-relocation policy that we needed to have the city council. This is another one of, uh, the policies. And actually, some of these policies, we actually already have incorporated in, into either our personnel policy or in the general orders of the police department, in a, in essence, about excessive force. So, a lot of these really, they are new policies, you know? But again, to, uh, to satisfy the requirements of any conditions of award and those two grants, we have to have these policies in place.
I have used my copy as the master and hopefully there's room enough for everybody to, you gotta print your name on the left and it says typed, but if you print your name neatly, yeah, I guess I'll have to accept that and sign it on the, print on the left, sign it, I, I'll get it right. Okay, um, any other questions to that? Uh, do we have to have a motion on that?
Joan, you think? I think you should.
I would.
Okay.
Send motion.
Randy made the motion for unanimous policy codes. Lowell seconded it. Open for discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried? Carrie? Now, we're going to. To, as soon as I get to that. We're gonna talk about liquor, tobacco, entertainment. We'll handle each one individually. I will take and read to all those that are requesting a liquor license.
Each group.
Each group, each group individually, yes. And, uh, and I'll ask for a motion to accept that particular license, uh, and we'll handle it that way. Liquor license, Addison County Eagles, American Legion Post fourteen, Bar Anecdote, Black Sheep Bistro, Champlain Farms, City Limits nightclub, Kenny Drugs, Shaw's supermarket, Small, Small City Market, Strong House Inn, Three Squares Cafe, Up Top Tavern, Virgin's Redemption Center and Virgin's Wine.
Make said motion.
Randy made a motion. Do I have a second? Ziggy seconded it? Any discussion? Have we heard anything back from the chiefs on any of these issues, uh, as being?
No, no.
Yeah, but he will if there is.
Right.
So, okay. We have a motion. Any other discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor for the liquor license? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried? Tobacco licenses, uh, are as follows: American Legion Post fourteen, Bar Anecdote, Champlain Farms, City Limits nightclub, Kenny Drugs, Shaw's supermarket, Small City Market, Virgin's Redemption Center, Virgin's Wine.
Lowell makes a motion.
And Lowell made the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Randy made the second. Okay, uh, motion is second. Any discussions, questions?
Question, is this, is this to allow people to smoke on the premises or to sell, sell the tobacco?
Yep. Okay, um, any other discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried? Live entertainment licenses for the following: Addison County Eagles, American Legion Post fourteen, Bar Anecdote, City Limits nightclub, Three Squares Cafe. Ask for motion. Add a motion for Lowell in a second by, um, yeah, Joe. Any discussion? Hearing none. Whoops, Randy?
Just a question, uh, all the, all the regulations apply to noise as far as doors being closed and all that?
Yep, we'll add that as we do every year, that restriction on each of the licenses.
Okay.
Good point. Forget all about it.
Okay.
So, that's not automatic? It just, you have to add it on individually?
We add it on every year. It's not part of the application?
Oh, it's not?
No.
Oh, alright.
And the restriction being that the outside doors to the establishment remain closed during time periods of live entertainment. So, like if a band's playing, the doors have to be shut. When they're taking a break at intermission, they can open the doors, but when the music plays, they're gonna close.
So, does his, has to be in the form of an amendment or are you just gonna automatically?
I will add the restriction. It's, it's the customary restriction. We put them on every year.
Okay, it's cause, okay, just wanna make sure we do it right and fair. Alright, I have motion second. Any other further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried? Uh, item number C, of which I don't know what it's about. Mel?
Yeah, well.
Something to do with petition and?
Joan, uh, Joan can take a little bit of the lead and then I'll, I'll chime from there.
We have received a petition in our office that was signed by, um, a hundred and fifteen voters requesting that the city call for a special meeting, um, to rescind Article One as approved on town meeting day, uh, to join the Addison Northwest Unified School District. So, by law, they had the right, the public had the right to petition this within a thirty-day period. And there had to be, five percent of our voters had to sign the petition to make it a valid petition. And all of those requirements have been met. It's been less than thirty days and we have the required signatures. So, um, there are copies at each of the places, um, telling you what the law is, what the city council has to do now with this. We have to warn a special meeting, um, within so many days of us receiving it.
Right.
Fifteen days, within fifteen days of receipt.
And since the city council, its next, its next regular meeting is not until April twelfth, that's more than fifteen days away and so really, unless you have a special meeting, it's at tonight's meeting is you needed to determine the date of that, uh, of when that vote, when the actual vote would occur. And then a, a warning would be prepared and we'd need your, need your signature. One of the things, and that, the, the, the actual vote has to be within sixty days of receipt of the petition. So, um, when you look at the calendar, uh, today's March twenty, March twenty-second, you go sixty days. I believe that the outside Tuesday, if you will, is May twenty-fourth. And if you just go.
May, May twenty-sixth, May twenty-fourth, excuse me, I'm in the wrong month. Okay, you're right.
May twenty-fourth, so your options really, you know, keep in mind, uh, you know, I, I think the warning is still thirty days. I mean, Joan has to post a checklist, so, you know, I think that typically the, the warning requirement is still, still thirty days in advance of the, uh, of the meeting. That warning does need to be signed by the city council and then it needs to be posted. So, you know, my feeling is, is to, obviously, without having any special meeting, we would prepare this warning for your signature at your April twelfth meeting you said?
Yep.
And the, the meeting, uh, your choices to me are either May twenty-fourth or May seventeen. That would be without you all having to have any special meetings to do that. I did, uh, the other law- Uh, I did, uh, the other law that I put in front of you, and Joan and I had some discussion about this, and, and it's about when there is a special meeting, uh, and whether or not there's a requirement of an informational meeting or a meeting the night before. And our charter is very specific about, about when it's the annual city meeting, we are required to have that meeting at seven-thirty the day before polls are open. Nowhere in our charter is there any reference to the requirement of having a meeting the day before a vote for, for special meetings. And I don't know of any time that the city voters have ever approved that, uh, where a seven-thirty the night before is required, all right? Now, I will tell you that I, I called Kathy Cannon down at the superintendent's office, uh, who I, I made her aware of this petition, talked to her about whether or not the, uh, whether or not the Subcommittee, uh, of Unification would like to, um, have, participate, whatever, whatever word you wanna use, in, in, in an informational meeting. According to Kathy, they really do want to have an informational meeting, that there is an informational meeting, and, uh, but no date has been set. And what Kathy said, that, that, uh, that the Subcommittee, according to Kathy, that the Subcommittee would like to work with the city council so that there is agreement with when this informational meeting would be held, all right? So let's say that, um, you know, I think the one thing that the city council should decide tonight is whether or not you wanna have the vote on the seventeenth or the twenty-fourth. And then what I would do is I would report that to Kathy, and then when you have the meeting on April twelfth, then you could, uh, this group and their group could determine what, what would be a good night to have, uh, to hold that informational meeting. The other thing that is happening is that according to Kathy, apparently, there is a, a petition being circulated in Addison, and one of the things that, that the, uh, at least, I'll say Kathy, that if that petition is filed, you know, she would hope that the, that the revotes would occur on the same day. Obviously, they don't have to occur on that same day, but, uh, you know, she would hope that that would occur. So, you know, uh, I'm just trying to keep in good commu- you know, give communication with the superintendent's office and make sure that, you know, uh, you know, I, I know Zig, you've talked about informational meetings that you couldn't make, you know? You know, let's, let's try to avoid this, uh, by, by communicating, and, and let's have it on Tuesday night.
Let's not have them on Tuesday nights.
So the first step is, is for the city council to, uh, pass a motion setting the date of the revote, uh, meeting. And I'm gonna say, my, my recommendation is either May seventeenth or May twenty-fourth, I don't, it doesn't matter to me.
As you tell, so. Go ahead.
Doesn't matter.
May seventeenth.
So taxes are due May fifteenth, which is a Sunday, which means they're gonna come in on the sixteenth, but they got a fifteen-day grace period, so.
I was gonna say the twenty-fourth.
Doesn't matter, if it's easier than-
It won't matter, we'll deal with whatever it is.
Seventeen.
Okay.
We're talking about the date of the vote.
The actual vote, correct. And we don't know about the date of the informational meeting at this point because we wanna, uh, work with the school, the Subcommittee on that.
One of the things, you don't have a motion, is it?
Nope, we don't.
Okay.
Um, discussion.
One of the things that I've heard, um, are complaints about people not being able to get the meetings and not knowing about stuff ahead of time. I have my personal opinion about that, but, um, it would seem to me, the longer amount of time you have before the vote, the more opportunity there is for people to meet and find out what's going on, um, you know, outside just the informational meeting, be a chance for discussions, be a chance for newspaper articles, and all those sorts of things, so.
Well, just-
The later, the better, in my opinion.
Food, food for thought is, we usually try to put our, uh, city voice out close to Memorial Day. Okay? So we could strive to get it out, just hear me out here. If we were to hold a vote around the twenty-fourth, I think we could talk to Lady Editor, she'll slap me upside the head, uh, if I commit for her, but we, as long as Mel gets his article in on time.
My.
No, I'm the one that's bad. Uh, we, we might be able to time it such that we could at least get some information out, not necessarily on the unification, but about the fact that there is a, the, the vote date, and then how critical it is to get out and vote. We couldn't make it then. We do have our calendar, our community calendar, virgin, on our website, that we can put any pieces of information on there as far as meetings that will be held, so we're more than happy to do that.
Mr. Mayor, I just noticed on the, our calendar, we have a meeting scheduled for the twenty-fourth, it's a regular city council meeting.
Yes.
After you count Mel.
After, yeah, right. It could be a real short meeting, Randy.
Yeah, well, I'm just re- making it clear, bringing it out.
Where'd you get that, Ellen? Or is that in a, some other file that I haven't got to yet?
It's in our packet. Slash eight.
My suspicion is the unification committee would hold more than just one meeting, they might hold meetings on their own. I mean, that's kinda historically what's, what's happened.
I guess that, that is up, that's up to them to do that. Uh, but like Mel says, if we just give them a, a vote date, maybe the seventeenth being the council meeting is on the twenty-fourth is, is the better of the dates. And, uh, we'll, yeah, Andy and other, uh, publications, local publications, too, just put the information out there.
Right.
And, uh, offer whatever support we can get to get the dates communicated to, so people hear.
So it's the seventeenth?
I don't know. I would like to hear, uh, a motion on, uh, a vote date.
I make the motion, May seventeenth?
Second.
We have a motion in the second for the seventeenth of May for a vote on the unification, revote. Um, op- open for discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, sorry. That's seventeen.
So we'll, uh, we'll prepare that warning and get that for you for signature at the, at, uh, your next meeting, and then, uh, and then you can decide as to when the, the city council will hold its informational meeting and advance that vote.
Is that Mike, I think?
I'm, yeah, I'm just looking at, I, I know, I'm, I'm staring, but I'm staring at the calendar to try to-
Yeah, actually, I'm sorry, um-
To see if picking some dates, I'm trying to think, uh, information meeting is, uh, what is, what is the council looking for, minimum one, hopefully two?
One, one, I think should be sufficient. And if you hold it-
Isn't it up to them?
That's up to them.
Yeah.
Well, I think, you know, I was, you know, you know, uh, you know, as, as Peter said, I mean, if, if the Subcommittee wants to have, you know, uh, you know, other meetings upon their own call, I mean, that, that's, that's obviously fine. You know, but I, uh, in my discussions with Kathy, you know, I think that, you know, uh, you know, I, I think that it is good policy for, you know, I mean, you know, keep in mind, this board found itself in the school business, you know? The Virgin's graded school district dissolved, all right? Obviously, had the Virgin's graded school district not dissolved, dissolved, you all wouldn't even be talking about this tonight because it would've been the graded school district that would've set the date of that meeting. And so that's how that's landed on your plate, and I, and, and therefore, it, uh, you know, like I said, you know, the city council is not required to have an informational meeting, but I would recommend that the city council have an, an informational meeting, and, uh, and I, I don't know that, we don't need to set that date tonight. I think we need to find out about availability of the, uh, of the Subcommittee.
Would there be a chance to maybe just have a summary of one of, maybe the May tenth meeting so that maybe it can be broadcast, just a quick synopsis of what, what, what the whole thing is about? So that the people that, that can't make the meeting could still maybe view it on the, on one of the, uh-
Well, I mean, if the agenda, I mean, uh, you know, if, if the, if the city council agenda can be purposefully light, I mean, it's, it's fine to hold your informational meeting, you know, at seven o'clock, uh, on the night of a city council meeting, and when that adjourned at eight o'clock or eight fifteen, then, then, uh, have your, your regular meeting, you know? Or you can, we can have the, the regular meeting, you know, at six-thirty or seven, and have the informational meeting start at seven-thirty, and try to conduct city, you know, city business so that, you know, that we aren't having to have a, a separate meeting, either way of that, either way, you know?
That's, one of the things that I've been trying to do is because there's really, really word to governance that's here, the city, school district, and to try to keep those somewhat se- separating.
But we're pulled into it anyway, so why not at least offer the-
We are pulled into it, but, um, I just tried to-
We have an added resource, though, that's, that was just my thought.
Yeah, no?
Added resource to use.
If this was a school district's business, who'd, who'd be paying for the election? The, the, uh, well, the school, actually, the, you know, I haven't talked to Kathy or Tom about the expense, uh, uh, Joe, but the, uh, the, the school paid for the publishing of the warning. Uh, obviously, you know, there is no graded school district, so, you know, um, uh, I think that it's probably our bill, you know, whether or not the, you know, supervisory union, I don't know where their money has been coming from, whether or not the supervisory union would feel that they, you know, have an obligation to cover that. Uh, you know, I really don't know, I, I don't mind, you know, asking the question, um.
Just curious on this rebuild, these con-
You know, the statute, you know, the whole business about, you know, the city, when there is a vote, uh, uh, you know, there was a time, for instance, like when the Virgin's Pant Water District would have a vote, you know, Virgin's would have, would, would vote here, and Pant would vote there, and, you know, if it was a single issue, if, if that was the only thing that was going on, you know, the Virgin's Pant Water District would re- would reimburse, all right? This is a little different because the graded school district has dissolved. There, you know, uh, and it put the city in the school business for this purpose, uh. So I don't know, I mean, I don't mind talking to Tom about it, but the, the bottom line is, is I think that it, you know, uh, you know, legally, it's probably our bill.
Do you know what an election like this is gonna run, is gonna cost?
Yeah, how much is this, how much is this petition gonna cost the city of Virgin's?
Well, the, we could get you that number, I mean, we have to, what we do is, you know, you know-
We didn't use it the last election.
And we can do that.
We're gonna save the cost of printing those, so then you're dealing with ballot clerks, and those fees are right on your warrants.
Yeah.
You know, we'll pay one ballot person all day long and-
Yeah, if, you know, you know, if the, you know, sometimes the, the legal notices don't have to be published in the paper, if they're posted soon enough.
So let's get that information out so people can make a fair and valued, uh, guess as to which side they wanna take, for, against. So let's, let's get the information out so we can move in one direction, forward or backwards, however that may be.
It certainly is a few hundred dollars, uh, but it's not like, you know, for, for a yes-no vote, it's not like we have ballot, you know, have counters or anything like that, you don't see a, you won't see a bill like that, but it certainly is a few hundred dollars, you know, three or four or five hundred dollars.
It'll be a hundred and sixty in workmanship and a hundred for food. So two sixty.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other items that we haven't covered that needs to come before the council tonight? If not, I'd ask Lowell to give his motion.
I will make the motion to adjourn.
Ask for a second? Randy second, all those in favor?
Aye.